Paul is speaking, George, he's right. I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, very good. To read the district mission statement. Two thousand twelve, I believe, revised in two thousand and twenty-two. In partnership with the communities, the mission of the Dilworth Glen and Felton School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible, lifelong learners. All right, Nicole, we've got everybody except for Laura, and I think she's come in. And we've got, in addition to that, we've got Tracy and John and Marianne and Heidi. And some other guests, so welcome. Agenda. Do I have a mo- do we have any changes?
Well, we made some adjustments, so the one you have is the correct one. Remember, we had to move some things around today, so I think everything you have in mine looks like it's right. So there should be no changes.
Do we have a motion to the general?
Some votes.
Motion by Lindsay, you have a second.
Second.
Second by Nicole, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Go on to number five, public comments and rebel recognition.
I do have one thing here from Tracy. And we have April sixth through the twelfth as recognized as the week of the young child. Thank you to all of our early childhood staff for your hard work supporting our students and families. You are the best. Kudos to them.
Any other rebel recognition? I think we did several kids go on from subsections in speech to sections, and that'll be this Thursday. I hope spring sports are in swing.
Baseball's up on their first games this week, so that's for sure, maybe, I don't know, maybe baseball's the one.
Baseball. I think they do.
This weekend?
Yep.
Call me, I guess, and then track.
Track's been going here for a whole while.
Yeah.
That's indoor again, I think, right?
All right, well, very good. Go on to six point one, technology report. John.
Well, it's gonna be a busy night, so I'm gonna work through these items faster here. I guess I'll open up for questions and answers, but I just got a few different topics.
Oh, yeah, you understand the camera, don't get off the camera.
I should know that, too. First item, cybersecurity. In an effort to reduce the chances of having a breach, DGF has adopted the CIS framework, Center for Internet Security. What that is, it's an organization that says, all right, their focus is helping organizations, specifically government, city, schools, the more the public side. These are industry-best standards. It's a checklist of checklists, and it's uber-dry material, so if anybody wants to fall asleep or have support material, I will be happy to share. But since 2021, K-12 sectors all have seen an eight hundred and twenty-seven percent increase in ransomware attacks. It's a problem. The state of Minnesota is actually starting to throw some money towards cybersecurity for schools. It's not much, but it's a start. MDE, Clay County, NSU, even the company that does our license validation have all had security breaches since last summer. So what we're trying to do, learn from other organizations, what they got in, and making sure we're blocking things up as best as we can. It's also a change for staff. No one wants to have longer passwords, multi-factor authentication, myself included, but it's kind of the name of the world we live in, so we're just trying to educate and perform as best we can and keep following those guidelines. Three CX phone evaluation. DGF's current phone system is ten years old. We bought a product called ShoreTel, and after we bought it, like in 2017, it got acquired by a larger company. Since then, we've seen an increase in their license fees and charges. My personal opinion, I don't see a lot of paying for a buck or enhancements in our phone system. So we are looking at a different phone system that has been popular with other K-12 schools, provide same-level services. Our current subscription cost for existing platform expires this June, so we budgeted some money for renewal, but we're going through the evaluation piece right now, so we've had a handful of office staff. We're doing a second run through it. As far as cost goes, it'd probably be about a wash for the next five years for what we're going to spend with just simply renewing our existing platform. Year six and beyond will be substantial savings. And partnering with a company that is actually their niche, it's small to mid-sized companies versus a company that just wants to partner with Microsoft, the general orders, massive corporations, so forward on that. Employee device refresh. We are looking at different hardware for our employees between our staff and our students. We're like, a lot of districts, we're able to use ESSR money, we're able to use COVID money. We're in time to do a refresh, and we're piloting Windows eleven and Chrome platforms. And Windows ten is gonna retire in the fall of 2025, so we're planning staff. There's gonna be a change regardless. Windows ten is going away, but as we look at these different platforms, we're looking at the initial cost, we're looking at stability, we're looking at security. A lot of schools have gone to the Chrome platform, Morehead is one of those schools. So we have two teachers at each school piloting it probably since January, February, trying to get different subject areas, trying to educate and get staff saying, it's gonna be different. I don't want to get into Chevy versus Ford debate, but what is it you need to do your job, not one-size-fits-all. There might be a department or a grade level or a subject area that says, hey, we need to have Windows. Let's validate that, let's go through that, so we're just not rubber-stamping it because, like, your cost, ability, security, you gotta ask those questions. But also realistic, sometimes when you ask those questions, some anxiety levels high. We're trying to make sure people understand the why. Brittany's been great to work with because we're trying to say, what are your curriculum needs? Once we identify those needs, now we're gonna find the tool that fits that. So let's not put our cards in front of others. Personnel change in smart director. He has been with us at a reduced capacity for last year, but he's kind of officially retiring this spring. He's been great to work with, so I just want to give a public thank you for him in general. He's got a calm demeanor, he's professional, he shows up day after day, and while you think that would just be a normal thing, when you can depend on an employee to do that, that's huge for me. He did say if we, because we're downsizing the team, if we run into roadblocks and need to, we fall behind on a project, would be willing to help out on a as-needed basis. But pending board approval tonight, we are looking at switching Ryan Burgett from the Lakes Country Co-op to the DGF barrel. He'd be a confidential employee, so Ryan will still be doing his same role, helping out with teachers in the classroom, but helping out more on the support piece on the operations side. So we'll see how that goes with a smaller leader team, but I was thinking about that again. Last but not least, TIL program acceptance. This is a partnership that Microsoft offers, and Jonah got the acceptance letter last Friday. Long story short, it allows our high school students to have in-depth computer science, a legit coding experience. And we had TILs before the COVID, and we had DGF kids, they're working with developers from Microsoft out in Seattle, out in India, and they're working on projects together, and it was a lot of fun to see. So we just got accepted in that program again. Suzanne Everson probably put her in here laughing, my apologies. We worked with her to say, hey, would you be comfortable, you know, taking the lead on this? That's part of the requirements for this program, so Microsoft provides volunteers, they come on site. They are the technical resource for that teacher. First year, they're kind of the driver seat, Suzanne would learn. On that second year, they co-teach, third year, Suzanne, you got it, and then Microsoft's a resource, you know, behind the scenes. So starting off with computer science, but they also have courses in the curriculum for AI, cybersecurity, AEP courses on computer science. So we got growth opportunities in there, so I'm excited to see that come back. I'm glad those are legitimate opportunities for our kids. So.
What made us not have it?
Of course not, I'm trying to work. So part of the requirements, Microsoft says, hey, we'll provide all the resources. DGF's responsibility to have a certified teacher in the classroom that's willing to learn. And we had that for a period of time, and then when that person left, it's definitely out of time, so.
This was our keynote thing at MSBA this year was computer, you know, computer science, and, you know, Minnesota is falling so far behind, and they were talking about that. You know, if you have a teacher that is willing to collaborate with the IT specialists to offer these stuff, this is exciting for our kids. There's so many opportunities out there, so that's awesome. It's good to hear. How many kids do you think will be admitted? Is it like an after-school or is it during the school?
First hour.
First hour, okay. So it's elective, just like everything else?
Yep.
Okay, awesome.
When I was working with Joel and Suzanne, I said, I'm excited. They got AEP coding content, they got AI, they got cybersecurity, a lot of science, because technology is the same pressure. No, it's not, there's a lot of specialties in there. Let's get our feet wet, let's get comfortable with the program. I'm open to say, hey, let's offer kids cybersecurity courses, let's do, you know, legitimate EP-related courses in coding. Let's get used to that first course first, and then this has got the opportunity to grow if we choose to. That's all I had, so unless there's other questions or concerns.
You might have any other questions for John? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I was gonna say, can I ask John?
All right, let's go on to six point two, transportation. Eileen, I forgot to mention that you were here. I went back and fixed my chart, thank you for being here.
That's okay. We're going into our busy season right now, we're gonna be running with all our field trips, all our sports activities, and we're very busy in transportation. The good thing is that we actually have a whole staff. We do have three full-time drivers, three spend drags, and we actually sit with a part-time driver right now, so it's really good there. And if you hurt, I think we have a horn who's, that they have very, who's, that all those people are running down to our pole. We have to, we do have another vehicle, and we just take our part-time person and have a drive around that. We're sitting very, very close. Setters have turned into resignation leaders this summer, I reckon, summer school, they will no longer be doing that. Working with Leeches, hopefully they will agree to take it on. All our regular routes are going good, we just finished all, I shouldn't say all, all C-bells, all the full-time hours I went through, all of them, I think I have two part doing once. I haven't waited, they're available, so we can actually. It's about all for transportation.
It's a very busy time. Yeah, I mean, I don't know if Eileen, I mean, the phone, just because, same with Katie, is, like, every, you know, they're changing, it's weather. We're fortunate this year, I think most things maybe will stay on schedule, hopefully the rain works, but, I mean, it's just constant. I lean, can we, I lean, I lean, I lean, I lean, so we lean a lot.
It'd be wonderful, we could have April and May for sports, that'd be really great, would make life easier.
Just thank you for dealing with all of it, it's a constant change for you, I know it is, so.
Thank you.
Just appreciate it.
Any questions?
The setters, not running this summer, is that? How will that affect, I mean, you're saying you're hoping that who would pick it up?
Leeches, I think, would pick it up, yeah.
So we've had a lot of discussion about this with the setters, too. And we saw our middle school and high school credit recovery, our rebel success, there's not gonna be summer transportation for them this summer. So it is gonna affect them a little bit, but those are kids that need to come and do some credit recovery, and last year we supplied it, and setter said, no, we're not doing that anymore. And there's a lot of reasons, and admin rode the bus with them for a while, Eileen rode the bus some in the summertime. It's just not something we're gonna do. It's unfortunate, but otherwise, we gotta staff it differently and hire two, three, it's just, so, visiting with the principals, Eileen, and setters. It's gonna be here, it's an option, you just have to get your student to school, so. And maybe we just, yeah, and that's a possibility. And whatever that is, we'll make sure we communicate it if that changes, but it's kind of where we're at right now.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thanks, Eileen.
All right, we'll go on to six point three, board committee reports, policy report.
We met after the last board meeting and just went through the policies listed, and there weren't any huge changes other than statute updates, minor. Just not any context changes, just the only one was the drug and alcohol testing for cannabis.
And they just added that.
Yeah, that was pretty much the be-changing now, so.
Not super exciting, but hopefully dates and.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, much. If you look at those policies, they're pretty dry. Any other questions, or any questions for Brittany? All right, let's go on to facilities and transportation.
We also met after the policy meeting last week. No, it wasn't last week, it was a week before.
After the last board meeting.
Anyway, not just getting updates on construction projects and, you know, JLG and Tomstock, that was kind of the gist of it, so.
Any questions? Any questions for facilities and transportation? All right, let's go on to board work session. Maybe if we had somebody that was here for the whole work session. Sorry about that.
Well, I think you just wanted like an overview?
Yeah.
We talked and met with Scott Mastin, who provided us a lengthy presentation on the overall mission, goals, and everything of Lake Agassy, and the three different programs that they offered, and then Marianne was able to supplement that on how that would directly affect DGF staff and students and our programming, and we were able to get reassured that this was something that was not going to take away from our students' needs or their programs, but in fact would just enhance some of those because we would have a broader net to pull from, and that Marianne would remain a DGF employee, which was fairly important to us as well as, I believe, Marianne. So that was good. And just had a lot of good options for top conversation as far as funding went. Scott provided some additional funding streams that he thought we might have access to and how that would look for our school, and how the different supports would be available to our facilities and to our finance department.
Good. Would he have anything to add?
I think it was just nice that you were just allowed the platform to just freely ask any question that we had. That was very helpful, and he was.
Yeah.
It did happen, I don't know if it does happen, but it did happen. All right, any other thing else on the work session? We'll go on to six point four, superintendent.
Yeah, so number one on there is that point twenty-five enrollment, so next year's enrollment. The numbers that we have enrolled right now for next year is fifteen thirty. When I say fifteen thirty, that gives everybody, if you have a superintendent, a little pause, because that's a scary number, because we're right around fifteen sixty right now. And the reason that is, is kindergarten numbers right now, kindergartners that are enrolled is sixty-three. We know it's early, so they have plenty of time to still enroll. But it's much behind last year's enrollment at this time. It's also behind two years ago enrollment at this time, so they're talking about either working the phones or having a second kindergarten roundup date. So just, we know there's other people out there, we just, this is reality right today, and I'm sure it'll change, but if we get thirty more, which I think is, you know, legitimate, then our number is right around fifty ninety. So we're going in a good direction, we just need to have more kindergartners enrolled, so we know that for sure, so.
Have we identified like a group that we're kind of missing? Because I know we have, you know, names of people that you expect in our district.
Well, I'll just, I'll just say this, they have some names and whatnot, but maybe the Dilworth contingent, only because the number enrolled in, from the Dilworth city or from the Dilworth area and the Glendon area is the same. So that tells me Dilworth is much bigger than Glendon, so I think that's a group of people that aren't registered yet as our whole. So that would be, I guess, when you compare, you say, well, Dilworth is usually has more, so they're coming, right? So that's kind of, I would say that's one group identified, maybe.
How many open and low caregivers do we currently have this year?
That's a great question, it's right on here, isn't it?
Oh, fifty.
About fifty. Yeah, so we get about five hundred, a little over five hundred from them, so kindergarten fifty this year, yeah, so there are some, so up to sixty-three. I want to say Brittany John told me the other day that I think fourteen of them are from Morehead or Salem, which is the Moore district. That was probably middle of last week, so that could have changed, because the number last week was fifty-nine. I see we have four more, so it could have been, I don't know, what's that? Oh, it's eighteen, there you go, okay, so maybe, maybe all of them are in. She's told me fourteen, I thought she told me last week, so. Yeah, I see it right here on the sheet. So you guys have this enrollment, don't you? You have the sheet in your packet, so you can see the numbers I'm referring to there. Somewhere in there. Yeah, so again, if you know anybody, kindergarten parents out there, please come and get enrolled, because we want to make sure, number one, we're serving our kids that we need to, we also want to get our staffing set. So it's a little nerve-wracking for our elementary staff right now, because we think we need more than three teachers or four teachers, we need more, so anyway, we have them, we want to make sure that's good. Next one is non-certified negotiations, that'll continue this Wednesday. It'll be our third meeting, and I think we'll start talking finance a little bit. We've been talking a lot of language in our first two meetings, I think those things are in a good place, maybe a couple little items, but now we'll start talking the finance piece, so that'll be this Wednesday, it'll be our third meeting. Mediation date, so kind of back to what Amy Johnson was just referring to in our facilities and transportation. We are going into mediation this week with JLG. Tuesday night, Tuesday night, tomorrow night. No, Wednesday night, thank you. Wednesday night is the tenth. We have a meeting with our lawyer, David, Lindsey and I will be meeting with John Market. That day, he's gonna be interviewing Minko Construction for about four hours, getting a bunch of information from them as they took over the project, and we're also major players here. Then we meet eight AM Thursday morning in the high school conference room, we're gonna do it in the building with JLG and their lawyers, and then, of course, we will be there. And then, once they've kind of done their piece, we're gonna do our piece with the mediator, the mediator will be present as well. And then we're gonna take them for a little walk, so around this building, yeah, we have kind of a laundry list of items that we will be showing. The next is quarterly district update, you guys probably shared with you, we also shared with the district, just some facts about where we're at with financing, with student enrollment, and all those things, so. Just wanted to make sure if anybody had questions about that, we have a budget meeting tonight after this board meeting, so we'll dig into that a little deeper with that team, but, yeah.
All right, any questions for Shannon? All right, we'll go on to seven point one. Motion for the regular meeting minutes of March point six, the twenty-fourth, a motion. Motion by Nicole, a second.
Second.
Second by Brittany. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We can send agenda eight point one. Claims and accounts.
One hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars in court defense.
Right. Treasurer's monthly budget report, your budget, the budget reports in your packet material, and also part of the agenda, agenda approved the resignation of Molly Wilson, elementary teacher, effective the end of the twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Some votes, motion by Lindsey, a second.
Second.
Second by Ev. Any questions or discussion?
Integrating. She was kindergarten.
All those in favor.
I'm sorry, are we waiting to see our numbers of where we decided we need to hire?
Yeah, we have six sections right now, so we need more than sixty-three, yeah, so we'll see. So last, this year we're at seven, last year or the year before, we were at six, so we're kind of keeping the six, hoping that we need the six.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signed, motion carries. On to nine point one, this is proof going forward with the application process to become a member of Lake Agassy Special Education. Do I have a motion?
So. Motion by.
Laura, a second.
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any questions or discussion?
I'd just like to thank Shannon and Marianne for the countless meetings. Thank you to the special education teachers for their emails and sharing their concerns, and everybody for their work session. I know it's a stressful process anytime you talk about moving something out or doing something different, so I just want to just state for the record, I appreciate everyone's time and bringing forward, you know, their information and their concerns, because if people don't bring their concerns forward, we don't, you know, we don't ask good questions, so.
And I thank Scott for answering those tough questions, because I think we riddled them with quite a few last week, so he was very patient with them, and I talked to him the next day, too, and had a few follow-up questions, and he was able to answer them, so that was nice, too.
I think we've had lots of good discussions, lots of good questions, kind of echoing what you guys said. I'm still feeling unsure, and I feel like time would help, and I know unless we do it now or wait, because it's always gonna be there, not always, but hopefully, right? I just feel like I'm prepared.
I think Nicole, Lindsey's coming, too, and I guess I'm in favor of this, it seems like, you know, from a financial standpoint, it seems like it's a winner. I think it'll allow Marianne to spend more time doing the things that she does best, hopefully take some of the load off of some of the stuff she does. We're all very busy. For those folks that are gonna continue in their roles, teachers are gonna stay with us, parents are gonna stay with us. You know, there's gonna be some folks that are kind of in the in-between, but they'll either stay with us or go with Lake Agassy, and I know change is always scary, but I guess I just think that it's a good idea. Shannon is in favor of this and wouldn't be pushing this unless felt it was good for the district, so.
I've worked with Lake Agassy in the past as a school resource officer and worked closely with their staff in our agencies specifically, because that's, you know, high needs, that's a lot of where my job focus was, and they have great staff and they're easy to work with. All their employees seem happy, they have a great facility, and I just think that they're a very reputable place for us to be partnering with.
Any other questions or discussion?
Plenty of good, plenty of questions. There's, for me, there's still probably another question or two that I'm just not totally clear on. But as a whole, there's some good opportunities for sure, which is, I would feel more comfortable with a couple more questions, that's all.
Any other questions, discussion?
Other questions we can answer today or like talk about?
I want to know, I want to know mortgage part. Well, you know, you're prepared for the best, you're prepared for the worst, hopefully the worst never happens, and if it doesn't, that's great. That's wonderful, but if for some reason, a few years down the road, for whatever reason, decided whatever problem, or what happened, we're filling the hole for a hundred grand a year, makes no sense to me. I don't understand that. If for the current terminology, as them saying that we are part of their mortgage. of their mortgage, anybody knows mortgage, there's an equity, there's a value, there's a standard rule, okay, if I rented something land and paid for that and whatnot, if I get kicked off or if I leave, I don't keep paying on that land, so I don't understand why we would continue to keep paying for services that we don't get to use. If they change that verbiage to this is our membership fee and it's a five-year term, ten-year term, remember, I don't have a problem with that as much as I do with saying that this is a mortgage, because that is a different word that presents itself as a true bill for us who know the essentials going into it, knowing that we're going to pay this no matter what, if we want to leave, this will be it, but they're saying that, you know, that's a problem I have, right or wrong, probably overthinking things, but yeah.
Yeah, it's a joint powers agreement, it's just kind of like Lake Agassy, what we did with the S, we paid a levy for their building as the S program, and that dissolved and nobody got anything, so that's too late, that's to Lake's Country Service Cooperative, it was in Morehead, we were paying on that for, I don't know, fifteen, twenty, thirty, probably forty years, I don't know, they just stopped it last year, and our levy that we were paying on that on an annual basis stopped, obviously when they cut the program, and everybody was a part of that program, we don't have a program anymore, so.
No, we're, we're a part of the program from the very beginning.
Yep.
Okay, this program is already in place, we're jumping on shoulders, so used ourselves for whatever reason, they still have the same budget today as they would tomorrow, we're coming in, we're adding, we're reducing their costs by adding to the kitty to pay for that mortgage, so what they're going to say that they need to keep paying and it's not budgeting, well, it's already budgeted right now, and they've been doing it for three years, so it shouldn't affect them from a negative standpoint, on the floor, if us joining, it's going to be beneficial, if for some reason, like I said, our C's, their numbers are still the same from what they had before or what they reduced, so if we're at the very beginning, I did that, it's, you know, I just, the tide is just.
Any other question? Go ahead.
Odds are, once you're in, probably not, but yes, there's benefits, there's money ten times over, but nobody plans on getting cancer, nobody plans on having an accident, they plan to have a house for it, it's happening, it's old, it's just trying to prove, there's no guarantees, but.
Any other questions or discussion?
My hesitation's not for the mortgage, like, but I do have some worry about, you know, once we're in, it's, no one's tried to go out, and I just feel like, I feel a bit rushed in making the decision, and it's still going to be there, so, I mean, if I had it my way, we'd just take more time to really hash it out and really out. There are benefits, I, that was a presentation, we all heard the benefits, but I think we're doing a great job as we are, not saying we obviously can't be better, but I just don't feel like in a place to think the years and.
Any other comments or discussion? All right, here you go, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. That's quick here. Five to two. On to nine point two, donation resolution. This is in your package, it's a resolution, so we will, it's a resolution, state law. So if anybody's wondering why we've changed this to a resolution, state law requires us, when we're accepting donations from the public, read a resolution.
Would you like one?
I just thought you wanted to.
No, I don't.
All right, resolution, accepting donations, whereas Minnesota statutes one twenty-three point zero two subdivision six provides, the board may receive for the benefit of the district bequest donations or gifts for any further purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated, in that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created or provided to the district or for the benefit of pupils thereof, including trusts created to provide pupils of the district with advanced education after completion of high school and the advancement of education, and whereas Minnesota statutes four seizing five point zero three provides, any city, county, school district or town may accept and grant or devise of real or personal property and redeem such property for the benefit of its citizens in accordance with the terms prescribed by the donor. Nothing herein shall authorize such acceptance or use for religious or sectarian purposes. Every such acceptance shall be by resolution of the governing body adopted by, two-thirds majority of its members expressing such terms in poll, whereas every such acceptance shall be by resolution of the governing body adopted by, two-thirds majority of its members expressing such terms in poll, therefore being resolved in the Super Board District of Dilworth and Wenda Felton Public Schools ISD twenty-one sixty-four, gratefully accepts the following donations as identified below in the table.
Oh, yeah.
From Kathy Martin in the amount of one hundred dollars for robotics, from STEM Alliance in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars for robotics.
Do I have a motion? She has a second, resolution.
So.
Motion by Lindsey, yes?
Is that Amy?
No, it's Amy.
Oh, Amy, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Oh, Lindsey's coming through, Lindsey seconds it. Any questions or discussions, discussion? Those folks for donations, robotics teams, they're doing a good job.
Going to do a roll call?
Yes. Any other questions or discussion? All right, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Laura, David, aye.
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 Random, motion carries, resolution passed. On to nine point three, this is for confidential contract, for Ryan Burke, as presented, do I have a motion? Motion by Brittany, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole, any questions or discussion?
So Ryan is one that John talked about in his report, Ryan used to work for Lake's Country Service Cooperative, and we are hiring him away from that as a tech integrationist to be our employee, he is also going to be helping, a twelve-month employee, so he's not just going to be, he had a hundred and ninety-day contract with Lake's Country, now he'll be a twelve-month employee and help us, as John mentioned, mark step and O two, so it's going to help with that department, so, yeah, really happy to have him.
I can just add, I had a couple of teachers just in passing talking about tech stuff, and they said he's been so helpful with new tech stuff in the elementary curriculum, and they just really appreciate having him, so.
Yeah, he's been huge in that, in that piece alone, just the curriculum has been, yeah, he's done, he's, he's just a good communicator, he works well with them, yeah, it's, he was a former teacher too, so he kind of gets what their world is, so.
Kids enjoy it too, I think.
Yeah, yeah, he does a nice job.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, signed, motion carries. On to nine point five, this is a, nine point four, sorry, nine point, that'd be so, this is a motion to approve the disposal of special education records for files that are eighteen years from the date of birth plus seven years, I have a motion.
So, go ahead.
Motion by Brittany, second by Lindsey. Question or discussion, I assume this is something.
This is an annual thing.
Yep. All right, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, nine point five, this is for a non-certified contract for Kennoac, food service class three, step ten, effective April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Motion by Eevee, no, a second, second, question or, any questions or discussion?
Yeah, so there's, and I think it was the last board meeting, or meeting before, we had a, also had a kitchen staff hire, and in this, in that board meeting, whether it was the last one or the one before, I think it was Brittany asked, hey, is this, or somebody asked me if this is everybody, and I was thinking it was everybody, this position, our position we had posted earlier, and we got no applicants, and I, this is something I was talking to Shannon about three, at least three months ago, because we want to shift to having a main kitchen in Wenda, and so this person's going to run, we got no applicants, it's forklift, it's heavy lifting, it's all that, and so because of those types of duties and responsibilities, that's why this person was placed into this class and this step. Because there was some question about the class, so he's just going to be transporting food, that's going to be a very small piece of this job, he's going to be unloading all the semis and all the lifting and stocking the shelves and doing the freezer work, so, yep, next year and maybe this year, he's going to be transporting food too, but his primary is going to be unloading semis and stocking. He also is going to be cross-trained, so right now he's already been dishwasher in Dilworth a couple of times, I think he dish washed here, so he's just going to be the kind of the one, the one-stop shop for subbing. There is another position, she has another half-time dishwasher position in Dilworth that she's going to open because, because we may have a need shortly, and she's had some discussions about that, and so there may be another part-time dishwasher position coming soon, so just a heads up on that.
Any other questions or discussion? Here you go, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signed. Motion carries. On to nine point six, this is for, this is a first reading and following policies, four oh five, veteran preference, four oh six, public and private personnel data, four oh seven, employee right to know exposure to hazardous substances, four oh eight, subpoena of school district employees, four oh nine, employee publications, instructional materials, invention creations, four twelve, expense reimbursement, four fourteen, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse, four fifteen, mandated reporting of malt drinking of vulnerable adults, and four sixteen, drug and alcohol testing. Do I have a motion? Motion by Brittany, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole, any questions or discussions? This is just the first reading, so. I think we already have, from this, all around from the committees. Are you know, questions or discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Nine point seven, this is to approve the first and only reading of policy five thirty-three, wellness, do I have a motion? Motion by Laura, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Eevee, any questions or discussion?
Is this where we just added about the snack?
Yes, yep, it's the only thing that changed, yeah.
So we did change the policy when we changed our snack thing in elementary, but we were missing like a phrase that even though people are providing their own snack, we have to give like a list of suggestions, and that's, we were just missing that verbiage, so.
And that, yeah, so that's the only thing changed on this one, yeah.
Brittany, any other questions? Here you go, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. On to nine point eight, this is for administrative contract, approve the administrative contract for Mary Ann, do I have a motion?
So, vote.
Motion by Lindsey.
Second.
Second by Nicole, any questions or discussion?
Thank you, Mary Ann, for your patience, we appreciate you and glad that we could come to terms today and.
Agreed.
So, let's do this.
Any other questions? I sent out an email earlier, hopefully everyone had a chance to look at it, okay, just descriptive terms, roughly, we're staying the same, changing title, but other than that, things are roughly the same. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Ten point one, next board meeting is April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, six PM in the DGF community room, and following that will be the personnel committee, at the conclusion of the board meeting. All right, Jer, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Nicole, I have a second. Second by Laura, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.